Howard Austin. Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker. Ben Peters. Dale Tyler.
Here.
We do have four.
Well, we got five, so.
Got five, we have four.
Next is approval of the minutes for April 5th, 2022, which is in a packet. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd love to approve the minutes here.
Dr. Compton makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller. Oh, it is a vote, was a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And Howard just came in. There he is. Welcome, Howard. We have some tabled items on our agenda. And I guess the first one will be R 22-26 Juan Manuel Garcia, 2805 East Emma. Next is 264, or L 22-23 264 Trailers, 2013 South Old Missouri Road. Then B 22-50 Sunbelt Rentals, 2004 Pleasant Street. Those will not be heard tonight. First on our agenda is RP 2205 Spring Ridge Subdivision. 8972 Crest Lane Lot 13 and 14 presented by Cecily Pinkley. Anybody here to speak for this?
Okay, hold on a second. We gotta see if you're authorized to represent. Did you submit an authorization form that you can represent her? Okay, we're checking. What was your name again, ma'am? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
Commission?
Tell us what you're doing. You're combining two lots. The one, can we do the slide for it there? Okay. Rick has comments.
That problem?
Standard comments in addition to they will need a resolution stating that blank has authority to execute certificate of transmittal ownership and ordinance.
Motion to subject staff comments. Motion subject staff comments. Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller. Any comments from the audience? To the commission.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
If you want this to go to council next.
I'm sorry, Howard.
I'm sorry, can we get everybody?
Yes, then we go 6-0.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, it need, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
Next is L 22-14 American Self Storage, 3037 American Street presented by McClellan Engineering, Adam B. Osswiler. Two variances, 22, B 2246 and B 2247.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Adam Osswiler with McClellan Consulting Engineers on behalf of the owner, American Self Storage, Sean McDonald. What we're trying to do with this project is really just stay in line with the project that is just north of it that is self-storage as well. Basically, they are self-storage units that kind of connect to and are adjacent to that existing building that is just north of it. It's the same owner as the property to the north, and it's really just a different type of storage unit compared to the ones that are on the adjacent property.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, variance has been requested for the foundation landscaping, and a variance has been requested for parking requirements.
The only engineering comment is to file the access easement and submit that to us for the shared access between the two properties.
And Rick, aren't they asking for a variance for commercial design standards as well?
So it's on the agenda?
Is that what's on the agenda?
Yeah. Principal materials, they're showing for most of it, but it's not, not all the buildings, correct? Okay, let's talk about the foundational landscaping. Did you do additional landscaping on the site to compensate for taking off the? Okay, so we have the same amount of landscaping, it's just at different locations.
Yes, it just didn't, it didn't adhere to the, the purpose of the project, having foundation landscaping in between each storage unit. It just didn't really make sense for this, this type of project.
Okay, and then you're asking for a variance for the number of additional parking spaces you would need for this new units?
Correct, yes, so the adjacent property has more than enough parking for this property and itself, and since it's the same owner, we would like to, basically, he's going to utilize all the parking for these units with that parking count.
Okay, what is the count and, and what is the variance for? How many spaces? You're required to add seven spaces, correct? For this addition?
Required of seven spaces, correct.
And you're adding none?
Correct.
Okay. And then let's talk about the building materials. Can we go to the elevations? Tell us what you've done with the building elevations.
So what we've done with the building elevations prior to our original submittal is that we've put a lot more of the brick facade material on the exterior of all the buildings that are adjacent to or abut the public right of ways or the adjacent properties. And so we've, we've tried to maximize as much as possible that brick material instead of the, the standard metal panels that are, you know, in between the storage units.
Okay, and that view D on here that shows the brick on, what's, what does that face? It's the north elevation?
D is the southern mo, D is the second from the bottom building.
Okay. And that's the backside of those buildings and doesn't have any doors?
Correct, it would be on the east and west sides.
Okay. Okay.
Do the variances together. Be a call for the vote. Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Variance is passed 6-0. On the large scale, the motion to subject staff comments.
Motion to move forward, approve subject staff comments.
Motion, Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Next is the Safekeepers, L 22-21 Safekeepers Self Storage Phase 2. Is that, no, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
571 Oak Grove Road with the variance, with the B 22-38 variance for commercial designs, design standards, foundation landscaping. Presented by Leslie Tabor Development Consultants Incorporated.
Hi, Leslie Tabor. Here to answer any questions you guys might have. We are, this is large-scale development for the phase two of the original development, which is additional buildings, site utilities, things of that nature.
This is a little bit different than what was originally proposed in that you have one big building instead of several small ones, is that correct? The original proposal we saw?
More or less.
Okay. Well, what? Okay, you got, you gotta go to the, you gotta go to the mic. Because when Debbie can't get it on tape, she gets cranky, so we want everybody to go to the mic, so we don't, we don't have to have someone cranky. And I get cranky when she gets cranky, so we can't have that.
No, we can't have that. I'm Mark Girth, the owner of Safekeepers Self Storage. In the original proposal, we had two large buildings initially. We reduced it down to phase one, which is one 24,000 square foot building with the office building and six units off of it. For phase two, we're proposing to go back with the second larger building and add an additional three smaller buildings to about 8,000 square feet each for those buildings.
Okay. We got staff comments?
Staff comments?
Standard comments, perimeter landscaping is required, but applicant has stated they have documentation from Springdale Water Utilities that will, they will not be allowed to plant within that easement and have placed the landscaping elsewhere. Front side and rear elevations, required elevations shall include type and color of materials used, foundation landscaping, percentage breakdowns of the materials used on the proposed buildings, and any architectural features used to comply with the commercial design standards. And just a moment ago, they were able to provide the percentage breakdowns and everything for that, as you can see before you. Predominant exterior building materials shall be high-quality materials, including and without limitation, the following: brick, native natural stone, synthetic stone, concrete, masonry units, smooth face units with integral color, synthetic stucco, ephesus, architectural precast concrete, decorative face concrete, tilt-up panels, glass, wood, natural or composite. The applicant has stated that this phase doesn't face the public right of way and thus will not be comprised of such materials. Predominant exterior, exterior building materials should not be smooth-faced concrete block, tilt-up concrete panels, or prefabbed steel panels. Applicant states that this phase doesn't face public right of way and thus will not be comprised of such materials. And finally, need detailed drawings of enclosures and screening methods. They were provided today.
So we haven't had a chance to look at the enclosures and screening methods because we just got them today? Okay.
Engineering comments, show a drainage easement around the pond, measure 20 foot from the 100-year watershed elevation, show an access easement to the pond, and then provide drafts of those easements. Show a detail for proposed changes to the original detention pond outlet structure, and then all of our necessary city standard details.
Katie, is there a second detention pond, or is this the?
So there's an existing pond on site that's being, their outlet structure is being retrofitted slightly, and then there's a smaller, I don't know if you would call it a pond, but a smaller drainage swale on the back.
Okay, because we should have gotten the drainage easements around the original pond.
Yes, this would be for the second part.
Okay, okay.
Do you like the variance first?
I have a, I have a question, chairman. Questions for the staff, how do we verify, Rick, whenever we do foundational landscaping that we're doing it somewhere else? How do we, how do we verify that that's actually calculated correctly and it's actually done?
We will rely upon the developer to provide the numeric breakdowns of what that is in their charts on the landscaping plans.
And then we go to count the numbers, make sure they're all put in where they're supposed to be?
Okay, thank you.
Down to the jury in the, in the rub. Yep.
Now with the variance, B 2238 for the commercial design standards, foundation landscaping.
That's for the buildings to look like you see in the drawing. With mostly metal panels. And the landscaping as seen on the landscaping plan.
Call for the vote.
That's all going together, right? It's just one variance, yeah, it's just one variance, okay.
Call for the vote. Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
No.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes 5-1. Now for L 22-21, the motion for the large scale.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Good to go. Next will be 2206. Joshua Day, Joshua Karen, David, and Eva Valantes, I hope I said that close to what it is. Eastside Irving McGar Road presented by Dan Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins here.
You need to identify yourself. Okay. Tell us what you're trying to do with this piece of property. Okay, you're doing an access easement along the southern edge of this property to the second lot. And you have septic system approvals that you can get septic systems on each of these lots? Okay. We have staff comments on this one. This is why this is in the planning area and our comments go to the county, doesn't actually go to council.
No comments? Commission? Be a call for the vote. Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
We got a.
Echo.
Echo in here, guys. Okay.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next is B 22-36 Gabriella Leach, 1601 Joy Street, variance for increased front fence height from three to six, presented by Gabriella Leach.
Okay, this was tabled from the last meeting to allow engineering to go look at the situation, so we need engineering to present to us what they've found. And then we'll have to, we'll have to go from there.
So for the variance on fence height, we went out there and measured the site triangle from the intersection to verify that we had a place that the fence could be set that would not interfere with the visibility at the intersection, and we measured that out and marked that out for Ms. Leach. And we don't think that if she moves it to that location, it should not interfere with the site.
So you're saying that the fence can stay the same height? And it will be angled to, in the direction of a site triangle, making it closer to the structure when you get next to the house where it is now?
Yes.
And angled to what point? We don't have a drawing or we don't have anything that shows that, did you?
Oh, okay. We have the drawing that we gave to her. Yep.
Okay. And did you look at the possibility of, of just not having any side, any fence in the site triangle at all, how far back it would have to go?
Right, so there will be no fence inside the site triangle.
Well, it will be right on the edge of the site triangle.
Yes.
At six, at what size, what height? Six feet?
Six feet.
Okay. That's not normally how we've done it, but that will be a totally different look than we've had anyplace else in town if we allow it to be angled like that. Normally, we've, we've taken the position that the fence has to be outside of the site triangle completely. Rather than angled.
To the commission?
So this would be a variance for the height to allow it to be three foot to six foot and angled with the site tri, site triangle.
And we also have variance for reduction of front setback.
I have a question, chairman. Ms. Leach, if you could remind the commission, what is the reason we're raising or wanting to raise this fence?
Well, by the time when I, my guy was actually building the fence, he contacted code and, code and, code enforcement, and they went and looked at it. And it was, we had the okay back then when it was this built. And as you can see, back in the, the other meeting that we had, you guys had a picture, which I didn't, I didn't took. But evidently, you know, I could have had it caught up in time for me to not build it as it was, because my guy called and then we, we checked, but apparently there was, was the little detail was missing, like, nobody told me about it. And then three days later, after the project started, then it brought up into my attention. So I really paid a lot of money for that fence, to be honest, and I, I wanted it to, my main concern, I even talked with my guy, and he says, by cleaning up also the, the bush that was in the corner will clear up all that entrance, you know, from back and forth getting, exiting from that corner. And so I thought we were good, we were clear, I would not have any trouble, but there it was, three days later, I have this letter, what it says, oh, your house, by the way, has two front yards. So at that point, to be honest, I am willing to move it in order for that compromise to me, because I think as a resident, I, I tried to do my best to improve that corner, but although I wasn't guided as straight as I needed it to, so.
Right, thank you for that. I, I guess the other question I would have is, are we raising it because we have children in the yard?
Right, yes, yes, yes. I have my kids, to be honest, I, I hope nobody shows up, but I'm a single mom, I have my two kids. I had a tough situation before, just for security purposes, that's my main thing. I want my children to be in the back and not be worried about who comes and goes, and if you go, right now, my two gates are locked, so that match, because I, I, I'm coming from a very hard situation, and I just want to settle, I just want my little house and, and just, you know, have it secured, because I work 10 hours a day.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this subdivision was plotted with a 15-foot front setback instead of the standard now that we have two 30s. So you want to reduce that setback on the Falcon Street side down to five feet? Not at 15, you want it to be down to five feet, so it's 10-foot wide, or is that, does that fit the site triangle, or is she still need that variance all the way down through there?
It's in a very corner, go ahead, sorry.
I believe that's for her shed that's in the back corner of the backyard, so it, it's fully within the backyard.
So she's putting the fence at the front setback line at 15 feet?
I, I don't think the fence. Say that again.
It, it'll be 20 in here in the back, this is the back of the house, and it'll, I'm thinking five in here for half that space in there.
So did y'all look at the, the location of the fence in relation to the, the setback line as well as the site triangle?
No, I believe she was asking for the variance for the setbacks for a shed.
Okay, but if the shed was already inside that 15-foot side setback, why does she need a variance for that one? I don't understand.
Oh, because I went and asked for permission also for that, when all this, that I needed a permission for anything, I went myself and asked for, and see what I need, what's the perimeters and what, what all that needs to be done in order for me to be all a shed in the back. They told me since it's, it's just a normal shed, to pull my tools in there, everything for the jar, it doesn't have, it will not have any electricity or anything like that. It has to be within the 20, 20 feet, they told me, from the back of my property, from the fence to start in, and 20 feet from facing the street. But they said by asking a variance, I may get it into, it's still the 20 feet because the gas line is in the back, but the five, five feet from the street side.
Ed, can you help?
How big is this shed?
I'm thinking 10 by 16.
160 square, because it's over 120 square feet, it would require a permit, because it's a permit, it can't be in the setbacks. There's a 15-foot utility easement on the back side, not the back.
This is Falcon.
The Falcon side, I believe, and there is a 10-foot utility easement on the rear.
Well, there's a 20-foot setback on the rear and a 15 on the, on the street side, but so she's asking for that front to be reduced from 15 to five? I don't understand what we're doing.
I guess, and, but the problem with that is that there's a 15-foot utility easement, it shows a 15, doesn't show well on the plat, I just caught it the other day, you have to go down the plat a ways and then it shows it as a utility, that whole 15-foot setbacks and utilities, but as you can see, there's a, there's a power line that runs right along the property line, so I'm pretty sure that's for the utility, for the, for the power company. Yeah, but your, but the electric power runs down Falcon.
So the slab's already been poured, and it encroaches into that utility easement then?
I'm not sure, I don't know, we haven't issued a permit yet.
Okay.
Comments from the audience? To the commission, what do we want to do with this? Do each variance separate?
First question I have is if the slab is already poured and it's in the easement, can we vote on that? I mean, doesn't that have to be verified before we would?
Well, I. I, I thought when we went out to look at it, we were going to look at all those things that were there, I, I didn't realize that we're just, just going to look at the fence height, so I would assume, I assumed, and that's my fault for assuming, that we would have both of the variances looked at, because they go together, but. Since we didn't. Okay, can we take just the fence today and take care of the fence, and then you go see building inspection about the, the shed, and then we'll figure out what we need to do with the shed? Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
We may have to move the shed, but we won't issue a permit.
I mean, I haven't started shedding there at all. I mean, I had a guy that, he kind of went and looked at me, looked at the place to give me an estimate, but to be honest, there is a concrete in there pour out that was previously there, it's not something that I.
Oh, you haven't.
No, ma'am, no, I haven't started.
Okay.
I had just a guy to go and look at it and give me an estimate, and he even put the, the points what I, I wanted it to, but there's nothing else built.
Okay, let's take the, let's just do the fence height, and then we can seek a word with building inspection, we'll determine what we've got to have, if, if we have to have something for the shed. Okay, so we need to call for the vote on just the variance for the fence height to, from three foot to six foot to angle with the site triangle.
Call for the vote. Call for, Mr. Covert?
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
No.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Motion, but variance passes 5-1. Good to go with your fans.
Thank you.
Next was R 22-27, Tryon Melonov.
Yes, sir, close enough, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's, uh. 5469 Watkins Avenue, rezone from A1 to C5 with a variance of B 2244, variance for minimum lot width from, in a C5 from 100 feet to 95, presented by Tryon.
Yes, sir.
Can I stop there?
That's, that's close enough, Tryon Melonov.
Okay, staff comments?
Okay, you're, you're asking to rezone this from A1 to C5?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's the only piece in that area that's not zoned to C5.
That's correct.
The Concretes of Land is planned in case regional commercial use, rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Concretes. Okay, it's the only piece in that area that's not zoned to C5?
That's correct.
The, uh, comprehensive land use plan in case regional commercial use. Res zoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended. For approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the provision of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commer- of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community and regional centers. And encourage the development of regional commercials that accommodates a variety of wholesale, retail, service and office uses for the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served. And more extensive outdoor display materials will be expected and permitted. Uh, and then there is a minimum lot width of 100 feet and it's at 95 for that. Are you, is this property gonna be developed separately or is it going to be sold to be incorporated with some of the other?
We don't know at this point. We just wanna.
Get it like the rest?
Yeah, change the zoning.
Okay.
Like everybody else and in the future we'll decide what we're going to do. Maybe the envelope or resell it. The house on the lot was demolished about two months ago and the lot is clean, everything is clean and just.
Now, there's not anyone living in the house right now, correct?
The, there is no house. The house was gone. The house was demolished.
I should notice that when I drive by there once in a while. We need the variance first, cause if the variance is not approved, then the rezoning can't be because it doesn't meet the minimum standards.
Question on the variance, by going to 95 feet, will that restrict them in the future by not being able to do anything they wanna do? Since it's at 95 and everything else needs to be in 100, is that gonna restrict them in any way?
Well, it makes it tighter to get the driveways in and we'll fit because it's, it's a smaller lot.
I just bring that up because I want you to be aware of that. Should something come down the road, I want you to know that that's, that's a potential obstacle, I guess, right?
Yes, yes.
It could be a development challenge in the way you lay the property out.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, it'd be, I guess, the variance first.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote for Mr. Culver.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Variance passes six zero. Let's go to the motion on the large scale.
No, this is a rezone.
Oh, it's a rezone. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's a long day for me.
Yeah.
Rezone. Call for the vote for the rezone.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote for Ms. Mueller.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to another rezone. R twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Albaron Family Farmers LLC, 1201 South Old Missouri Road. From C2 to I1, presented by Anderson Engineering.
Rick, can you move the? Who's got the clicker? Okay.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Chris Tilly. I'm with Anderson Engineering. This is a rezoning for 1201 South Old Missouri Road. The current site is zoned for commercial two. And, uh, we're requesting that it be rezoned to industrial one. This is in line with the surrounding zoning.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial warehouse use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. As the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourage the development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base. Insulate industrial areas from other activities by providing sufficient buffers. And assure the development of adequate services and utilities and take maximum advantage of railroad facilities.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on May the 24th.
Thank you.
Next, we have R twenty-two dash thirty, Rudy Martinez, 916 Parker Avenue. Rezoned from C2 to MF twelve, presented by Jose Martinez.
Hi, I'm Ivan Borosom and this is Jose Martinez. I'm just gonna check for check for him.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for this area. Um, the rezoning request, though I'm recommending approval, is to protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability. Allow the development of residential offices or residential as to stabilize and buffer the other types of development. If you'll see, a lot of that area around there is already zoned MF twelve. There are single-family houses to the east of it. There are, uh, mobile homes to the north. And so a rezone to MF twelve is in keeping with that area.
Any comments from the audience? Please. Please state your name and address, please.
Um, hi, my name is Hady Avalos. I live right in front in 917 Parker Avenue. Um, and, um, I'll introduce them, um, in a second. Um, but, uh, I was wondering how this is gonna affect the, or pros and cons of how it's gonna affect the neighborhood to have multifamily homes. I would like to know what kind of multifamily home. Is it like a duplex, triplex, or is it gonna be apartment structures?
An MF four zone that they're asking for, uh, MF twelve, I'm sorry, will allow for single-family, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes.
Okay, am I able to ask right now what exactly it's gonna be?
The rezoning request we're looking at now is only to determine what is the highest and best use. They can build any of those options on that site, provided that they can meet the minimum standards. And so any of those is a possibility. Now, the property on the south side of Parker Avenue is zoned commercial. So any residential structures in that side is non-conforming uses. Which means once they're vacated, once someone quits living in them, they can't be used as single-family again. So they're non-conforming uses as well. This property as it is now was, is the same thing.
Same thing. Okay, the, the ones on the south side, are you, that like the trailers, where the trailers are? Is that the one you're talking about?
The ones to the north, the ones that at 1001, 921, 917 to 915, Parker Avenue on the south side of Parker. If you can see there is in that kinda purplish color, that's all zoned commercial as well. And those are considered to be non-conforming uses. Again, they are allowed to stay as long as they're not vacant for more than six months. If they're vacant for more than six months, they can't be rebuilt as residential uses, no longer allowed in a C2 zone.
The, where the 917 is, you said?
Yes, 915, 917, 921. Those are all non-conforming uses, yes.
Okay, so, and you said vacant for more than six months and then at that point, they basically have to go back to commercial use?
Correct, or you have to rezone it to, as they're doing, to an MF twelve or a residential zone in order for that residential structure to continue to operate after that six months.
Okay, okay, give me a moment and then I'll, I'll translate for her real quick. Okay, okay, and, um, this is Yesenia Ca- Cañeros. She lives on 921, um, Parker Avenue. And she had a question about, is this gonna, and I know you just said that, you know, it's not determining yet exactly what's gonna be built on it. It's just to change the zoning. Uh, but she wants to know how that zoning would affect, I guess, our property values right now.
They are only rezoning their property. It, it doesn't affect any other zoning on the street, only their property. If the property on the other side wants to be rezoned, you have to go through the same process.
So they'd have to go through another process, um, in order, um, sorry. The Martinez's would have to go basically through another, um, set of processes to, to see if they can even build on it? Right now, it's just zoning?
Right now, it's zoning. If they, if it is rezoned and they want to build single-family or duplexes, they go to the building inspection department and get a building permit. It has to meet minimum standards. If they wanna build anything larger than a duplex, they have to submit a non-large-scale development plan for us to look at before they can do anything larger than a duplex.
Larger, okay. And, um, is there, I, I guess, who could we talk to if we had concerns? For example, about what exactly is gonna be built up there?
Well, you can always call our office and if we know what's going on or building inspection, to see if they got a permit.
Permit, okay, but, okay.
But any of those are permitted uses as long as they can meet the minimum standards and the minimum setback requirement.
Okay, that's all questions for now. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for, uh, Mark. Mr. Cloud.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Staff will prepare the, uh, ordinance that goes to council on May the 24th.
Thank you.
Next is R twenty-two dash thirty-one, J E M Holdings LLC, South Butterfield Coach Road, south of Neighborhood Market from MF twenty-four to C5, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, we're here asking for this property to be rezoned back to C5 from the MF twenty-four zone, uh, that is current, that is currently. Um, and I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The, uh, comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for it. And as Mr. Apple just said, the property was previously rezoned to C5 and it would be returning to the zoning that was approved previously.
Any comments from the audience?
Oh yeah, we do have one, one letter that was submitted today. "Greetings, we are writing to express our awareness of and concern for the future of the parcel of land adjacent to our farm. It is parcel ninety-two dash thirty-one, which is the rezoning request uh, due north of our property and due south of the Neighborhood Market on Butterfield Coach Road. Our family wishes to express our encouragement of positive growth and development in Springdale while also maintaining a strong connection to its past. The Gay family has owned these, this piece of land for many decades. There are a total of 138 acres of land surrounding that general parcel that belongs to this family. We are in our 99th year producing and sharing the fruits of our labor with our region. This land has a very special place in our hearts and we hope to protect it for future growth and generations to come. It is our understanding that a zoning of C5 can cover a multitude of various commercial ventures. Our greatest hope is that the commission and developers bear in mind the agricultural zoning surrounding R twenty-two thirty-one and the multitude of neighborhoods, schools, churches and small businesses in the area as well."
To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Culver.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you.
Move on to conditional use. C twenty-two oh seven, The Cheesy Goat, twenty-four oh three South Thompson. Use unit forty-four and a C2. Also a variance of twenty-two forty-eight for utility requirements, presented by Brian Richardson.
Yes, I'm Brian Richardson, the owner of The Cheesy Goat.
Staff comments?
Uh, the, uh, ingress and ingress to the property is acceptable. This is at, uh, twenty-four oh three West Thompson. The food truck is to be located on the north side of the parking lot. Can we go to the site plan? Do we have it in here where everybody could see it? Okay, see where they're proposing to put the proposed food truck. Uh, you are eliminating those, um, extra two picnic tables that were kind of in the way.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, ingress and ingress to the property is acceptable. Off-street parking and loading areas is acceptable. You'll see they have three parking spaces that has been designated for this. Uh, you have trash pickup arrangements with the property owner?
Yes, ma'am.
That you can dispose of it that way. Uh, the utilities, you're asking for a variance for, to hook up to electric?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a water and wastewater plan that is through the existing businesses there? Okay, uh, the only signing you will have is on the, on the truck itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Trailer itself. Uh, the screening is not applicable. The yard requirements are acceptable. The size and shape is acceptable. Uh, the general compatibility is generally compatible with the adjacent properties and other property in the general district, subject to the following conditions. May not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Health certificate is required. Display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs, no vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violates any other city ordinance that's in connection with a vending operation. Sites should remain clean and free of paper refuse of any kind generated from the operation of the building with all trash or debris accumulated within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into a trash container, subject to hours of operations that were submitted with the application and subject to the waste and water, wastewater plan that was submitted with the application. And your hours of operation indicate that you will not be operating the food truck at the times that the donut shop is open?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, which means the donut shop operates Monday through Saturday from 5:30 to 11:00. You will be open from 11:00 to 2:00 and 5:00 to 9:00 on Mondays, Tuesdays. Uh, closed on Wednesdays and Thursdays, open on Friday from 11:00 to 2:00 and 5:00 to 9:00. And Saturdays from 11:00 to 2:00, well, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 11:00 to 2:00 and 5:00 to 9:00.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, it'd be a call for the vote?
Uh, on the variance?
On the variance.
That's allows them to, to hook into the power and not have to use a generator?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Cloud?
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Variance passes six zero. Call for the vote for, for the conditional use? Call for the vote, Mr. Culver?
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
We didn't even let you ta- get to tell us what kinda food you're gonna have. Maybe we should do that.
A lot of cheese steaks, cheese fries, grilled cheese sandwiches, all cheese related.
If it's got cheese, you're good, right? Okay. Staff will prepare the, uh, resolution that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you so much.
Don't let her kid you. You had us all at cheese. That's where it stopped.
Moving on to the preliminary plats, replats and final plats. First is RP twenty-two oh seven Railroad Edition, 414 Falcon Street, block two, lots one, two, three and four, presented by Bates and Associates.
Good evening, Justin Reed with Bates and Associates. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Staff comments?
Um, standard comments and need a resolution stating who has authority to execute the certificate of transmittal ownership and ordinance. That's all.
Basically, you're taking how many lots and making them into how many lots?
There are three old platted lots and 22 feet of another platted lot, so three and a half. We are turning those into two lots.
No engineering comment other than signatures and stuff? No engineering comments other than signatures and stuff?
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for vote. Oh, I'm sorry, a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Next is FP 220, 2105, cottages at the park, Phase Two, north of West County Line Road, west to south of Downham, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We're ready to final plat Phase Two, which is the center portion of the cottage's development. 68 lots with this phase, and I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
I just have all the items on the final plat checklist, which I can read if you'd like.
Those are standard comments.
Yeah, standard comments.
All that has to be put in before it has the final signature and I'm the one that signs it last.
Yep, and I believe all the final inspection punch list items have been completed this time.
To the commission, be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
You wanted to have this on the council agenda for next Tuesday and you had the ordinance in our office by tomorrow at noon.
No problem, thank you.
Now we're moving to large-scale developments. L 22-17 Whitney Place, 1506 Powell Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. This project, 10-acre apartment complex project, was previously approved in 2018. Same layout, just looking for reapproval so we can get started.
Staff comments?
Only standard comments.
Just a couple of minor comments. Adjust the storm line where the detention pond charges. It's just a mistake when it got copied over, I think. Update the sidewalk detail to show the eight-foot width and then call out the concrete drive on the site plan.
Any comments from the audience?
We do have one comment that was submitted to our office today. Person that's submitting it is Ray Main. I'm the pastor of the Gospel of Peace Tabernacle at 1701 Powell. I live across the street at 1700 Powell. I have no problem with the owners of property and whatever the city allows. There's, however, potential problem with the additional traffic on Powell Street with Jones School just down the street. The school traffic twice a day plus the normal through traffic is very heavy already. This type of development potentially add another 200 cars easily. There are a lot of kids that walk to Jones School. And being kids, they do not pay a lot of attention in crossing the street, as I personally observe from time to time. My hope is that the planning commission will take these concerns in consideration.
To the commission, be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comment.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Next is the L 22-24 Springdale Airport East Hanger, 710 South Old Missouri Road, presented by Garver Engineers, Greg Thomas. I'm not sure who's, who is, or would they be on?
I don't see anybody here from Garver. Let's come back to this one in a minute.
Move it to the end?
Yeah.
We'll go on to L 22-257 Brew, 1360 and 1390 East Robinson Avenue. Variance, two variances, B 2241, A is foundation landscaping, B entrances, presented by Bates and Associates.
My name is Jake Chavis with Bates and Associates.
Rick.
We brought this to planning commission about a year ago. Planning commission denied a variance. Originally, we had two drives associated with this property. We have since changed that and we are bringing it back for you guys with a lot less variances, and I'm here for any questions that you have.
And you added some additional land to the east to get to the drive where there's no conflict with the existing drive, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Can you move to the drawing, Rick? So we can see what the drawing looks like. Okay?
Any other staff comments?
Yeah, Ron Hesse.
We have the normal staff comments. Then also need to show the total number of handicap spaces required. Show the total number of handicap spaces provided. In the details page, please show typical dimensions for regular parking, nine by 19. Show typical dimensions for handicap parking, 11 by 19. Show the width of the handicap access area, five foot minimum. Show the location of the handicap parking signs. And then handicap ramps shall be provided wherever a sidewalk crosses a curb, at crosswalks, driveways, and street intersections. And then for the two variances, the all sides of principal building that directly faces an abutting public right of way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights of way. Then only two entrances are required, one along primary street and one along a secondary street. And then also foundation landscaping is required.
And landscaping, are you providing additional landscaping on the site to accommodate for the foundation landscaping variance?
I believe we are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you believe you are, you are.
We are.
There's a difference.
Knew that was coming.
Okay, you tell me you are, that's one thing, okay? And then the discussion about the handicap spaces, you all are going to add those?
Yeah, the architect believes that we are exempt from ADA requirements due to the small square feet of working space. He and Ron are, I think, going to work that out. But if Ron still decides after reading the code that it's not, or it is required, then we will add all of that, of course.
You've got to have either the exemption has to be approved or you have to put the spaces on there one way or the other, okay? We can do that.
Steve Hatfield looked into this and he said he believes that the exemption refers to the employee work area only and does not apply to the outdoor public spaces or parking lot.
Okay, we weren't looking at the outdoor spaces in the parking lot. We're looking at the size of the structure itself. And we don't have to argue that here. We'll work through that and make a determination one way or the other, okay?
Any comments?
Do you have any other comments? Katie, okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, we'll go to the variances, so I guess take them both together.
Yeah.
Yep.
Call for the vote. Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Passes six zero, variances.
Thank you very much.
Large scale. Do large-scale motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you, guys.
Next is L 22-26 Los Margaritas Plaza, 610 North Thompson, with variance B 2242. A entrances, B structure and back and sides, C perimeter parking area landscaping, presented by Alan Deaver, Happen Associates.
Thank you, this is Alan Deaver with Happen Associates. This is a project that was brought to the planning commission in October of 2020 and was approved. Construction never happened. We're here to, because our approval expired and the owner's looking to begin construction now. And so we're just here to get that approval again.
But you made modifications.
That's correct.
From what was previously approved.
That's correct. We are adding more parking that is desperately needed at this site, which is leading to these variances.
And you shifted the billing to the south?
To the south, the left side of the sheet, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Eliminated the parking that was on that side?
There was, there might have been two spaces back there, but very little. But we've gained, I think, 20 on the north side there, a whole nother row of parking.
Staff comments?
Staff comments. Submit a completed informal plat application for the five subject parcels. The five proposed parking spaces abutting Harris Street, the east side of the existing building. Show the distance between those parking spaces and the proposed dumpster pad and show the distance between those parking spaces and Harris Street right of way. Foundation landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Additional foundation landscaping on the north and east side of the building and the proposed restaurant. And perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56, in which a variance has been requested for, and standard comments. Just had one comment about revising a note regarding streetlights, and I'm going to send you the language we'd like to see on our streetlight notes.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion, or I guess we'll go all the variances together.
Quick question, Sarah, when you say they've turned it in incomplete, is that, does that put the city at any risk as far as moving forward with voting on what's before us tonight? Do we know?
No, they can, they can be done simultaneously. And part of it was submitted, just not the application and some supplemental documents.
Thank you.
They're combining them all into one and we can do a lot of combinations at the staff level. It doesn't have to come to you guys.
Call for the vote on the variances.
Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Variance is passes six zero. Motion subject to staff comments on the large scale.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Mueller.
Second.
Second, Mr. Covert.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Large scale passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have L 22-27 Hunt Family Children's Safety Center, 3284 South Gene George Boulevard, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We, we've got a large scale for the children's safety center. It's approximately 15,000 square feet, just south of our vest ballpark on Gene George. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, applicant will need to show the parcel number of the property in a prominent font above the legal description, and that will be done once Washington County has assigned a new parcel number.
Submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report to engineering. Please keep us updated on conversations with the adjacent development about a drainage easement across the property. And I heard back today, it sounds like that is moving forward. Show ADA ramps across the entrance and then show our stranded streetlight notes. And again, I'll send you the language that we'd like to see there. We're making some changes.
Can you get down to the elevation so everybody can see what it's going to look like? They have met the requirements of the overlay district for features and all kinds of things. It's a great asset to that area. And I'll say I really like the imprint. I think that's pretty special. It tells you what it is.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Next is L 22-28 Frito-Lay Warehouse, 1255 Kendrick Avenue, with a waiver, 2209, of street improvements, presented by ESI.
Yes, sir, thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. We did submit a waiver request for the improvements at Kendrick. It's currently under design, hoping to start construction soon. Frito-Lay is requesting a 19,000 square foot distribution center warehouse at this location. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, please show the parcel number and legal description on the cover page, and they are awaiting the new parcel number from the county. Perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56, waiver of street improvements on Kendrick Avenue. And they, it was requested that they provide elevations of the property in the proposal.
Now, we know that elevations are not required of industrial properties, but talking with Public Facilities Board, nobody knows what this is going to look like.
Do engineering comments? Submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report. Submit the access easement for the encroaching radius on the northwest corner of the plans. And please show this easement on the plans. I did not see details regarding the retaining wall. And please specify what page those are on. And add a scale to indicate, sorry, add a scale indication to the vicinity map on the cover.
Jason, you want to address the perimeter landscaping issue? You didn't ask for a variance.
I thought we were going to meet it, so we'll work with staff and comply. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the question is, but...
Well, it doesn't go all the way around the side. It stops at the edge of the paved area. And then the parking spaces that are along the back, why is there not a parking island in there?
We can add one. Those are just spaces for their trucks back there. So we can add an island back there. Is there, is there a requirement for the south?
Chapter 56 doesn't give a indication that if you have 15 or more parking spaces, you've got to have an island.
Okay, we can add the island.
Okay, you'll take care of that one.
What about the perimeter landscaping?
And you'll take care of perimeter landscaping?
In, along that southern edge?
Well, and what about the, the west side?
Adjacent to industrial, 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 is that not?
It's not a screening requirement, it's perimeter landscaping. We're not asking you to screen it. We're asking you to do perimeter landscaping in conformance with Chapter 56. There's a difference. You don't have to screen it.
Is that parking or drive aisles or any paved area?
Well, we'll have to go into those details, but...
I mean, obviously, we're, we're, we'll comply with that, we just thought that there was a, a use, and it's not a parking area, so we, that landscaping was required on the west side. If it's required on the southern side, we'll, we'll add that in there.
Well, if it's, if it's just the parking area, it's got to be on both sides. Perimeter landscaping, define parking areas and prevent two adjacent lots from becoming one large expansive paving when perimeter landscaping is required. The diagram below illustrates this concept. A five-feet landscape tri- strip is required along the side and rear lots of developments with one tree per twenty-five linear feet along lot lines. I...
Okay, no problem.
Okay, you'll take care of that?
I have a, I have a question, and I, and I, and all the time I've been on this commission, I don't think I've ever done this at this time, so if Patsy beats me up after school, I understand. I don't know that putting an island in the back in a truck turnaround makes sense. And the reason I say that is, I'm all for islands, I'm all for landscaping, but we've all been in shopping areas where trucks run over those because they just don't have enough turning radius. We've seen the concrete busted, we've seen them all drug out on the, we've seen how all that take place. I, I would just like to raise, I'm not saying I, I don't think there should be something back there, but I'd, I'd like us just from a staff point to review that and see if it makes sense to actually have an island behind a building out of public view just for the sake of having an island for tree count or something, because tractor trailers just simply don't maneuver around islands well. So just, that and twenty-five cents will get you a quarter, but I just, I'd throw that out there just for thoughts.
It, it's just a backing area, it's not a maneuvering area, we, we can work through that stuff, I agree. But I, the perimeter landscaping issue is one that needs to be addressed.
Any comments from the audience?
And then the waiver of street improvements, what's the request? Because that is being, that street is being improved as part of a bond program project, and so you're dedicating a right of way and asking for the waiver based on that?
That is correct.
Okay. We hadn't talked about that at all. I think we got comments.
Yeah, we got comments. State your name and address, please.
Free to Willingham, thirteen oh three Kendrick. I am right next door. So there's going to be a barrier between my property and where the warehouse is going in. Some kind of fence type barrier.
Jason, is it adjacent to her property, is there another piece of property between her and the, and this lot? Because I didn't think there was a...
Miss Willingham?
I'm at thirteen oh three Kendrick, I think.
Yeah, so you're here. It's adjacent.
Okay, so then there would be a screening requirement on that side?
Yeah, we're showing eight-foot privacy fence and then along with the trees down there.
Okay.
Okay, I have just one more question. When, when, when they start the widening of the, of Kendrick, there was a guy came and talked to us like in two thousand eighteen, and said they were going north because the city owned all the property north of us because we're on the south side of Kendrick?
Okay, that, that situation out there has changed, I guess, some because now Bethel Heights is in Springdale, so we're not dealing with two different cities. But I don't know about the, the alignment of the street.
Okay.
If you will call engineering tomorrow, they can meet with you or discuss with you. Have you already dedicated the right, or been, the right of way been purchased?
There's no right of way, they've never talked to me about a right of way.
Okay, then they must be using existing right of way then. I, I don't know, you'll have to check with engineering and, and see what, what that situation is.
Okay.
Mayor's sitting right, right there behind you, and he may have more information about that than I do.
Well, that was my understanding, but something may have changed, Jason.
I can, yeah, I can try to address some concerns. We just finished right of way documents in the last week, city has those, so you will be getting a request. There were some design constraints with the road, we couldn't move it all the way north, and so we did have a slight right of way ask along your front.
Okay.
So...
So, Mayor, do we know when those, those, stuff's going to go out to them?
ESI probably is a better idea for us.
Well, we sent them to the city for review, approved the right of way documents, and then appraisals will start. So it'll probably still be a little bit...
Okay, because the property still has to be appraised, so don't expect somebody to show up with a document for you right of way. The next contact you will have is an appraiser will come and meet with you and look at the property, because that has to be done next. Okay? Okay?
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission?
So it's a call for the vote, do we want to recommend granting the waiver? That needs to be a motion of...
Recommendation?
Yeah, it's a recommendation, counsel, yes.
For the waiver.
If that's what we want to do.
Recommendation to move forward to counsel with a recommendation to approve the waiver.
Recommendation to approve by Mr. Covert.
You second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cloud.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Recommendation passes six zero for approval.
Thank you.
Large scale, the motion subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion of Ms. Mueller, second. Second, Mr. Covert.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Lost that one there. Sorry.
Next, we have L twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Star Mechanical Supply Warehouse, one twenty-two West Randall Wabi Road, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. Star Mechanical's requesting to add twenty thousand square feet of a new building. Currently, there are some smaller warehouse buildings there, and some outdoor storage space. We're going to try to enclose that area, so answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, landscaping was not provided, and we were, we did not receive elevations for the proposal.
For engineering, you'll just need to submit your floodplain development permit application.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
How much, or what size of a structure are you putting in here?
Twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
There's... Yeah, I think there's currently eight thousand feet there, plus the, the storage areas.
And you didn't provide any landscaping, why?
Currently, it's a storage yard, we didn't, I guess we don't understand where we need landscaping. Or just replace, the intent is just to replace the storage yard with a, with a building, so... And there's, there's overhead power along the creek. We're not going to be able to plant trees in if that's the desired location. I just don't...
So that, Jason's at the same thought process on the building elevations?
Yeah, I mean, it's industrial use, industrial area, it's going to be a metal building.
What's the property to the east, I mean, to the west?
Multifamily?
Yeah. Screening requirements, you need to address the screening requirements between a multifamily and a industrial use?
I mean, there's vegetation along the creek on both sides as well. Where's our property?
This is really, this is the only thing we have, is this drawing right here, right?
I think we have another site plan that's... I've got another sheet. I'm sure that's not the only thing we've seen.
They're saying this, the screening, the screening to the, to the west will be the trees along the creek? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Rick, did you have anything else in the packet that you're aware of?
Well, there's, there should be some additional pages in your, that came in the packet, but it doesn't show any more details than that.
Yes, I used this picture because I thought that it would, would be the best option available.
And that, there's that dark area on this drawing is just the existing pavement, and you're not adding any more paving than what's already there?
Right, I think there's a gravel storage yard to the north of the building that is being paved to meet that requirement. Currently, there's a fence, the property line's adjacent to the fence. There's overhead power lines that are running along that fence. We can't put trees underneath that overhead power easement as well. So that's why we're proposing to keep the landscaping, existing vegetation at our western border.
So that additional paving, because it's a gravel area, doesn't create any stormwater issues or anything like that? I'm assuming?
It's basically equivalent calculation.
Motion subject staff comments.
Motion subject staff comments?
Motion, Mr. Covert. Your second?
We don't have a picture of what the, the creek or anything like that looks like.
This is the only thing that we had that was close to the aerial, is what we put in on the screen right now.
Jason, is there any kind of time crunch on this that would preclude us from just tableing this till next month? We'd get some more detail.
Oh, I mean, we're trying to get started right now, so, I mean, I can add, looks like...
Because I mean, we want to, we want to help you with the right, but I mean, we, we just have nothing to go on here.
I, I guess, help me with the requirement of landscaping, what's required?
Well, the, the question's going to become the screening issue between that and the multifamily to the, to the west. Is the existing planning and stuff there enough to cover it? Or, you know, I, I, I don't know, I haven't, I don't have that information. And...
Yeah, I just, I just want a picture of that.
I, I just pulled up Google Earth on that, and it's, it's pretty heavily wooded to the west. Well, if that helps answer your question, I don't know, I just...
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't so much concerned with landscaping, Mayor, as I was just wanting to see what the building looked like, but...
I mean, it's going to be a metal building warehouse, style metal building.
And is your plan show that you're going to preserve all that? I mean, it says, the following information is required on a landscape plan. Location, general type and quality of existing vegetation, including specimens trees, existing vegetation to be preserved, methods and details for protecting existing vegetation during destruction, and approved sediment control plan, location labels of all proposed plants, you know, that kind of stuff. I mean, if you're proposing to keep that...
Yeah.
We don't have that identified on here where we know what you're, what you're keeping.
Well, page two, that was submitted, shows the existing trees to remain. We're, you know, the fence is there, we're not taking the fence out, so we're not impeding or encroaching in the trees. So, I mean, we're not taking any of them out with the improvement.
Still have a second, so we're, I'm stuck right now, but we don't have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Mueller.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Locked out, guys.
Moving on to board of adjustment. B twenty-two dash thirty-nine, Magdaleno Pena Alvarez, seventeen oh five Theodore Drive, variance to expand driveway eight foot towards the door, presented by Magdaleno Pena Alvarez. No one here? Move that to the end or table it? We will table that. B twenty-two forty, Roger and Michelle Westlink, fifteen seven Colby Circle, variance for reduction, sir, but rich rear setback from twenty to ten feet, presented by Roger and Michelle Westlink. Okay. Wait on it.
We can come back to you in just a minute. Okay?
We'll move on to, come back to that, we'll move on to... B twenty-two dash forty-three, Williams Tractor, forty-one ninety and forty-one eighty-four South Forty-Eighth Street, variance for sign requirements in a C five, presented by Lee Reinhardt.
Kevin Yarborough and Lee Reinhardt, Arkansas Sign and Banner. We are here to seek a variance for a second sign for the Williams Tractor lot that is a third sign, I should say. This is actually one for the Forty-Eighth Street side of the property. It is the only entrance into the property as it's adjacent to forty-nine. The visibility is from the highway, but as they come off of Don Tyson and come down to the property, there's, because of the ordinance, there's no signage allowed with the highway signage and that elevation as well. So the variance is to try to get a sign on the Forty-Eighth Street side of the property so that they can have some identification. The, the building sits, I don't know, probably a quarter mile to the west of that road, and so there's no visibility or, or identification at all for that Williams Tractor.
Staff comments?
So you have one sign for each of the separate businesses, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and this sign you want down here will have both businesses on it, or two signs?
This one... I believe this one is just Williams Tractor.
Um, I believe it has Wood Motor on it as well.
With a rider on it.
Uh, yeah, it's a multi-tenant pa- panel on it.
So the two that we seeing on the screen is the two signs that's along forty-nine?
Those are the two that are near the highway.
That's correct.
And they go back a page to, that was the one that's going on at Forty-Eighth Street, and will have two panels?
That's correct.
Okay.
One will be Wood Motors Sports, one of those panels there to the right.
Any comments from the audience? Would you please go to the mic and state your name and address?
My name is Donna Johnson, I live at four three zero five South Forty-Eighth Street, so I'm across the street and on a hill as well. So when I look out now, I can see Interstate forty-nine and some of that. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that this sign was not going to be real tall where I would be seeing it sitting on from my front porch, and also the brightness.
The only lit part of the sign will be the WT logo, as well as the two blank multi-tenant panels, which will eventually have final for each business. The overall height is a ninety-five point eight two inches tall, and it conforms to all of the standard sign ordinances with the city for a monument sign.
I didn't know if it would be real high.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Call for the vote for, for, to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Vote, Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Is this sign parallel to forty-eight or perpendicular to forty-eight?
It will be perpendicular.
Is it two-sided or one-sided?
Are they doing a single-sided face? I apologize, I was incorrect.
It's a monumental sign that will be, the same face on each side. On Forty-Eighth?
If you go back to the...
That's what I'm confused by.
If you go back to the site plan, I believe I've put it, yeah, you can see, it's very hard to see on the right there, but it is perpendicular to the road.
So you can see on both sides?
Yeah, I think with a sign facing north.
Single-sided facing north.
Single-sided facing north only.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I believe that's probably because once they looked at it, there's a little bit of a hill on the other side. So trying to make sure that it was set back far enough to not impede on site triangle coming out. Uh, it's going to be blocked from the one, uh, basically if you're coming north, it's going to be somewhat blocked anyway. So it was not functioning. They're anticipating their traffic flow to be from Don Tyson south instead of from the Johnson area north. And so as you come down that hill, there's really no way to see where their entrance is until you're right on it. So they want to put this on the south side of their entrance facing to the north. So that as you come down, you see it and can identify it before you get to it. It's kind of an odd topography there where there's, it's hilly.
Passes six zero?
Are you all ready now?
Yes.
And we'll go back to B twenty-two forty Roger and Michelle Westlink.
Hello. Roger Westlink, one five seven zero Colby Circle. So what we're proposing is that last year we installed a hybrid type swimming pool. And it sits about one foot, six inches off the ground. And we're proposing to build a deck one foot, six inches high. All the way around the pool itself and our request is to, uh, gain a variance from twenty feet down to ten feet as shown on the drawing.
Staff comments?
If I have any comments or building inspection? I don't see, stay here. No?
To the commission? Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Okay, thank you.
Move to B twenty-two dash forty-four. No, we already done that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosaura. I'm the owner of the house. Uh, we want to add a garage and attached garage. The house doesn't have it right now. Um, of course. And we want to do it twenty by twenty-one, uh, but our setback is eight. So we just want to do like, I guess, half feet. Where the wall is going to end. That's why we are just asking for a variance to be able to build a garage that is going to be twenty by twenty-one. We are adding a door and a window at the back so they can access to the other side of the backyard.
Staff comments?
Does it have an overhang? If we're going to give a variance, we need to make sure we cover everything.
Does your, does the garage, is it just a carport or is it garage? And does it have an overhang? Does it have an eave?
It's going to have like, uh, it's going to have an.
Like the house?
Yes, like the house.
The house has at least a one foot eave.
Yeah, I think when we measure, we didn't consider the.
They need another foot.
Yeah, that we need another foot, yes.
Yeah, there's no sense doing this if it's going to be what we were asking for, four inches. Let's do a. Yeah, let's do sixteen inches and give them a little bit of breathing room. Eighteen inches? Okay, let's just make it two feet and then we don't have to worry about it. Let's just make it two feet. Then we don't have to be so quite so, uh. Yeah. From eight to, let's go from eight to six, okay?
Perfect.
It gives you a little bit of room.
Yeah, and that's one, one of my questions that my husband has is like, oh, I didn't consider the face, the fascia. So like, okay, let me ask about that.
Yeah, we want to give you enough space so you don't have to come back again. So we'll give you two feet.
Thank you so much.
Well, that's, it's got, got to pass first, but.
Any comments from the audience?
Yes.
B two two commission be a call for the vote? Eight feet to six feet.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you so much.
We'll go down to L twenty-two dash forty-nine John Easterling, two oh three Angela Street. Variance for reduction aside setback eight to five feet presented by John Easterling.
Hi, John Easterling? Um, I have existing building. I'd like to build a pool house and add a bathroom to it. And, um, the previous building's already built there with six feet from the, uh, north property. And so I'm asking to reduce this, um, to a six foot over, a five foot setback.
Staff comments?
Mr. Easterling's been in my office and talked to Tom. It's an existing building and, um, he's not asking, he's not begging for forgiveness, so. I didn't, I didn't build the structure.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, do you call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Ms. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Do I, can I get a permit for that now? I mean, not right now, but.
You can go see building inspection, get one.
I don't have to come back for another.
Now we got Midway Mobile Home Park. Oh, yeah, is somebody here about the airport?
Let's do Midway first since we're here. We got. Midway Mobile Home Park thirty-eight ten South Thompson Expansion of a Nonconforming Use presented by Jason Beck.
Thank you, uh, Jason Beck with Midway Mobile Home Park. Happy to answer any questions with the site plan.
Staff comments?
Okay, basically what we've been talking about for it seems like several many months now is, is they are in the process of upgrading the mobile home park. And as you know, it's a nonconforming use in the zoning district it's in. And there are some mobile homes in this park that are older. They're trying to replace them with newer. You can't get mobile homes that size anymore. And so what we asked them to do was to calculate all of the sizes of mobile homes that was in the existing park. And then show us which ones they want to replace and what they want to replace it with. And calculate that they're not increasing the total amount of mobile homes on the lot more than twenty percent, I mean, thirty percent. And that they're not encroaching on the drive areas or the setbacks on the back. And so the drawing that you see here is showing which one would be replaced with a different size and that it doesn't, uh, expand into that. And then there was a table in that that shows what each side was going to be, uh, replaced with.
That is correct.
Take it, take it.
Yes.
Okay. So this would be, if approved, will be a, an expansion of a nonconforming use. And I think you said it was twenty-nine. Do you have the table in here too? Okay, twenty-nine cent percent, right?
That is correct.
Yep.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote, right?
Dale, Dale, I'm like. It was hard for me to tell from the drawing and I've been out to the site. There are about forty-two or so units there now.
That is correct.
How many units are you going to pull out of there and are you going to replace that with an equivalent amount?
Yes, we are uncertain of the exact number that we're going to pull out, but it looks like right now about ten or twelve of the homes that are older. And replace those with newer homes. Uh, the newer homes, like, uh, Ms. Chrissy said, are slightly larger size by about two feet in width and ten or twelve feet in length. Um, and so we're just looking to keep the exact same number of homes that are in there, just replace the ones that need to be replaced.
And that number is about ten or so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, we did go ahead, um, at the request of the city and present the total master plan. For, um, any futures homes that we need to pull out for a total of thirty-two.
That's better.
But the total does not exceed its twenty-nine percent replacements of the total square footage.
Correct.
So once you get this approved, any of those that you show in here are the ones that you can replace with a larger one. So you don't have to come back every time you decide another one needs to be replaced.
Correct. We wanted to have a plan that we could move forward with everything without having to come in.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there a fence on the south side of this or north side of this property?
No. No.
Uh, there is currently on the, uh, side of the property towards, uh, Tyson Avenue. Uh, there is not a fence there right now. We actually are getting quotes to put a fence there. Um, but the rest of the property does have fence all the way around it, except for the front entrance, obviously.
So will you be putting a fence on the south side of the property?
That's our plan, yes.
So what we need is a motion to approve expansion of the nonconforming use as presented with this, this plan and not to exceed. Twenty-nine percent with the table that was included in the request as well.
And you think we're going to remember all that?
Oh, you got to do, say you made that motion.
I'd like to make a motion based on what Patsy just said.
I got it.
Motion of Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second of Ms. Mueller.
Tyler?
Debbie knows how to do these.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Beck, that, that's a substantial investment, I know, on a property like that. So thank you for doing that. It's, uh, it's the right thing for, for you, obviously, and it's the right thing for Springville. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll go back to. Back to B twenty-two dash forty Roger. No, that's not it.
It's L twenty-two twenty-four.
It is a hanger?
It's the hanger.
Yeah. I put a circle by it too. Maybe I put a circle by two of them. There it is. L twenty-two dash twenty-four Springville Airport East Hanger presented by Garver Engineers Greg Thomas. Table?
Yep.
And we're down to you.
I do have a planning directors report this time.
Okay.
I didn't have one last month, but I, I'm caught up now.
I'll ask for it.
Okay. Planning, council actions in March, all of the rezonings that were submitted to the city council for approval were approved. I can go over each one if you need to know those. Uh, the replats for Worth Lane and Lot One of Mercy Health was approved. They approved a design contract for Fifty-Sixth Street from Elm Springs Road to County Line Road and County Line Road to Shaw Park. Where the design contract was awarded. In April, the replats for Railroad Edition and Parker's Place were both approved. And the rezonings that were submitted were also approved. We have received one appeal, which is the appeal of the, uh, variance that was denied. And it will go to council on the tenth. The applicant requested that it be put off until the tenth, and that's the only appeal we have so far. They approved the street waiver for A-Tech on Chapman in the payment in lieu of improvements for Martin's plastering. They approved a redressing city awards map, which you can find online. Funded a temporary impact route for Ozark Regional Transit. And approved a contract and change order for harbor extension between Fortieth Street and Newton Sun with the change order to. Remove the lights and the right turn lanes. Um, and they approved the construction contract for the Razorback Greenway Trail realignment. Our work session on May the seventeenth. We had originally talked about, and this is the time when the consultants, H three will be back to present their recommendations for the amendment to the downtown master plan. And they are scheduled to make a presentation to you guys and the city council. At first, we thought we were going to be able to do a joint meeting on the sixteenth, but their schedule doesn't allow for them to be here on the sixteenth. So our regular planning commission work session will be the seventeenth at five o'clock and we'll meet in this room if we can get it. So that we can have more people to attend and we will invite the city council to that meeting. If that doesn't work, we're going to have to schedule another session for the city council because we don't, they couldn't make it on that Monday night. They had a conflict, so. That's kind of where we are with anything unless anybody have any questions or comments?
Any further business, I'll. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.